I'd like to call the Northwood Board of Selecting meeting to order on January 8, 2019 at 6:02. We'll call Donald Hudson here.
Beth Boudreaux, I'm here.
Scott Breier, here.
Glenn, would you like to leave us some questions?
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America, to be by the Lord's commandments, one nation, under God, universal, liberty, and justice in the law.
Alright, our first order of business is a public hearing. I'm gonna read it in. Pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 33:8/A, the town of Northwood Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on January 2019 commencing at 6:00 PM at the Northwood Town Hall concerning a proposed municipal bond issue for the amount of $5,975,000 for the construction of a public safety complex building. That being said, if you come up and you'd like to ask a question, I'd ask you to state your name and your address, and we will now open it up for questions. I'm gonna allow Scott to take over and run the meeting as he was the representative for the safety complex committee.
Would the public like a brief summary of the project first before we take comment? So, I'd like to, and I can help you.
Turn it over to Glenn to do a brief presentation on the complex, and then we can take questions.
Okay, good evening. So, we started this approximately three months ago, four months ago, in August. We hit the ground running. First thing that we did, we looked at several pieces of property. We looked at, we know we wanted to stay on the east end of town because that's the fire station we're gonna close, the Ridge Station. So, we knew we wanted to be transfer station east. That was one of the first pre-records that said we wanted. Second, we needed space. So, we looked at several, some not for sale, some for sale. We ultimately landed on 635 First New Hampshire Turnpike, which is this piece of land right here. Currently, two buildings on this property. It's the old Knowles Broadfeeder, if you will, and the three kind of strip mall building where the Thai food place used to be. So, this would be the Thai food place, and the white building would be just about here. We looked at this property. It's about seven acres. It was currently and is currently for sale. We engaged SMP Architecture. They reviewed it. They liked the layout of it. And ultimately, this is the land that we landed on. It was a sale. It was a wind and a half mile radius that we wanted to keep of the current station on Route 4, so access to all parts of the town. Relatively flat, there will be some grading and whatever you want to call it during construction, but it was a good piece of land for us. We were able to broker an agreement with the current owners that they're gonna hold it for us until March, pending the vote. They can show it for other backup offers, but we get first dibs to it if this passes in March, then we have to do several steps. If it doesn't pass in March, it just goes back on the market and doesn't cost the town anything. So, we land on the property. One of the other properties, and you know, people will say, you know, two-story building, one-story building. We looked at another piece of property that wasn't currently for sale. However, we had to go so far back on that property that it was gonna cost us anywhere from $2,500,000 to $500,000 just to lay a road in, bring all the utilities in, and then actually construct. So, we'd be into this, you know, $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 before we even broke ground on the building itself. So, that was one of the issues with that piece of property. So, we settled on this piece of property, and we focused our attention on this. So, up on the screen here, you can see a 3D model of the proposed building, the conceptual So, this would be facing the building from Route 4. This would be the front of the building that you see. It will be a two-story building, but as you can see, they're using the grade to our advantage. It's going to appear as a one-story building. That would be the front entrance way there, and this would be, right now, a prefabricated apparatus bay for the fire department, prefabricated metal structure. As we come around, this would be looking from the west. This would be the west side of the building, coming around to the rear of the building. So, the apparatus bay will be, you'll see four doors on the back, three on the front. It would be a three-bay drive-through apparatus bay for them, with a fourth bay that only has rear access, basically. However, it can be converted in the future, add another door on the front to have four access bays or drive-through bays on the apparatus bay. This here, the windows on the backside here, would be the bunk rooms for the full-time firefighters to stay. And this is as I'm speaking, and now you can see how it's built into the grade where, if you were looking from the condos side of the building, it would appear to be a one-story structure, kind of a residential feel to it, but still know that it's a public So, this would be the backside of the building. So, this top part would be the police secure area. You'd be looking at the booking room, interview room, and I'll go through that with the plans in just a minute. In a two-car drive-through garage, one would be a Sallyport, and one would be a storage garage area for the police cruisers. As we come around, this would be the view looking from the east to the west. So, if you're at the meadfield condos, this is the angle that you would have. So, it appears to be a one-story building. And we're back to the front. Public parking area would be out in the front there on the left side of the screen. So, this is how it would lay out on the property. We already have the two access driveway cuts, accessways in. This would be the public in and out area. The second one would be a restricted access, mostly firefighters leaving, or fire department leaving, and police cruisers leaving that way. However, they could come back in this way if there was a large volume of people using this public access area. Once you get out of the public area, this would involve the restricted access for police and fire personnel. So, the top floor, as you come in on the grade level, would be the police entrance way. So, you would come in, this is that front porch that you see right there. Front porch into a vestibule area. That's where a direct dial phone would be, like we have on the front of the police department now. You pick it up, goes automatically to dispatch, you don't have to dial anything, and you can tell them why you're at the police department, and they'll send an officer. We would like to see this as being, if you will, a secure room, or a safe room, if you will. If there is a domestic going on in a car or road rage incident, there would be a button, hopefully, inside this vestibule area to hit. It would lock that door. The person would be safe inside, being able to talk to dispatch, tell them what's going on, and be safe until the officers arrive. Once you come in through the vestibule, you come into the main lobby. Those of you that have dealt with the police department, this would be Wendy's area, our administrative assistant. She would be here in this lobby area. Off the lobby would be a soft meeting room. If you come in, you want to speak to an officer, but you don't want everyone else to know what's going on in your life at the moment, the officer and the person could step in in there, they could fill out the paperwork, fill out a statement, and then they could leave after, you know, turning in the paperwork to Wendy. Just a soft, small, private area for an officer and a resident to have a conversation. So, off the lobby, go down this way, two public bathrooms. Those of you who've taken the tour know the police department does not have any public bathrooms whatsoever. So, anyone that's passing on Route 4 comes to our window and says, "I need to use the bathroom," they have to be escorted in because it's in the secure area. Wendy, an officer, has to stand relatively close to the bathroom door while they do whatever they gotta do, and escort them back out. Here, we would have public access off of this training community room. We wanted to have something that the community could have for themselves. This room would be able to be used at night after hours using access control in our modules that you can get into this area, get into the community room. We're looking at between 30 and 50 people, depending on how it's configured, with a kitchen off of it as well, that if there was a potluck or some sort of function that a community group wanted to use, they would have a kitchen area as well off of that community/training room that we could also use to, you know, to cook our meals and the fire department meals and stuff like that. Off of the community room would also be the emergency operations center or the emergency management director's office. Right now, we don't have one. Pretty much, we call Bob Young on his phone and say, "Where'd you park your Jeep?" 'cause that's our, that's no lie, our operation center. It's wherever Bob parks for the particular storm. Excuse me. So, he would have an office there, and in a situation, either it's a storm, or a police emergency, or a fire emergency, that's gonna be extended out, this community room would become the EOC. So, we could meet in there, discuss what's going on, out of the sight of the media, out of the weather, everything else, and talk about what's going on. So, we'd actually have a real place where the fire chief, the police chief, you know, the command staff can meet and come up with a game plan to how to address that situation. So, that would be all open to the public from, basically, this door here. Back is all the secure police facility. So, as you go down this hallway, you go to the chief's office, two more offices on this side, one for the lieutenant, one would be a supervisor's office. On the opposite side of the hallway would be the armory. Those of you that took the tour know our armory is a closet that we had to rip out the guts and put up two doors to store the weapons that we've seized. We've seized so many weapons for domestic violence, restraining orders, court orders, stuff like that. We have no place to store those, so we had to create one. This would give us a secure, actual armory where we can store and safe-keep these weapons. After the armory, going down the hallway would be the patrol office. So, it wouldn't be an individual office for each officer. It would be one big office with either around, you know, the outside work areas or a couple of work areas set up within the room. This would be with all the patrol officers would type their reports, do their work and So, as we come down, on the backside, I don't know if you can see that, on the backside of this hallway would be the men's and women's locker rooms. Right now, we do not have a locker room, a shower facility, anything. So, you remember the tornado back in '08? I had officers out there in flip-flops and shorts because they couldn't get to their homes to get the uniforms, and there's no place at the current PD to store their uniforms or equipment. So, they were out there in an orange vest. We found them a vest, and they did that, directing traffic for most of the day and At the end of the hallway would be, this is called Observation, and right next to that would be an interview room. This is the room that you see on TV. We can sit in the Observation Room, watch the interview that's going on with the other officer, be able to hear what's going on, see the reactions, take notes. Right now, we use our conference room. Those of you who took the tour again know what you say in the conference room is also heard out in the lobby because the walls are so thick. There is no privacy whatsoever in that building. So, there would be, you know, a real, actual interview room to do our investigations. Next to that is the booking room, where all the restees are done, are processed, and inside that would be two detention areas. One would be set up with a toilet, that way they don't have to use our toilet. Drunks tend to throw up. When they throw up in our bathroom now, we are out without a bathroom until we can get Servpro in there to clean it up and disinfect it. So, poor Wendy, who comes in Monday morning after a long weekend, may not have a bathroom to use until Servpro shows up. So, they'll have, and they can mess it up all they want, 'cause that's where they're gonna hang out, not us. The other one would be a strictly empty room, just a detention area to securely hold the people while we're processing them. To get into the booking room, I mentioned a Sallyport. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's a garage. We can drive the cruiser in, garage doors closed. Now, they're in a secure spot. We can go right from the cruiser, right to the booking room, without having to perp-walk them through the parking lot like we do now, so everyone can see that John so-and-so got arrested. Look, there he is, walking through the parking lot into the building. And if they want to try to escape, worst thing that's gonna happen is we're gonna play Ring Around the Rosie in the garage. They can't go anywhere. Once they're in the booking room, they'll be processed and released right from that room. Next to the booking will be the evidence room, the evidence locker, equipped with proper evidence storage, ventilation. Right now, it's just a room that smells really, really bad with all the marijuana and everything else that's in that room, breaking down, doing what Bonnie does, and not good stuff when that stuff gets old. So, the evidence will be right there, and it will be a pass-through, built into the wall, proper evidence storage. Officer puts it in there, and it can't be accessed until the evidence officer comes in and access those lockers from the backside, right into the evidence room. That's the tour of the police department.
Elevator shaft, chief?
Yes, sorry. In the public area, be an elevator and a stairway down to the fireside. These would both be secured. They wouldn't have free access. Wendy would have to either grant them access into the elevator and send them down, or grant them access into the stairway to get down to the fireside. We don't want anybody just walking in and walking down into that area. We're gonna give Wendy a little bit of ballistic protection on her windows, whether it's filament or actual construction area, but right now, basically, she's got a really thick piece of glass that a determined individual can make their way through and do whatever they want, once they get in there. So, on the second floor, if you will, the bottom floor would be the fireside. You come down the stairs or the elevator, basically, it's an exact replica of the above side. There will be an exercise room down there for police and fire. That's a shared exercise room, both police and fire. No equipment will be bought for that exercise room through the barn. That would always be out of our police association, the fire association, donations, whatever. We'd equip it that way. So, you go down this main hallway towards the apparatus bay. You have the staff work area and the dayroom. The dayroom is where the fire personnel hang out and, basically, in between calls. It's where they do their work. I won't make any firefired jokes about chili or... See, that's a lot better laugh than I got the first time. But that's their dayroom. That's their, you know, I hate to use the word "hangout area," but that's where they would be during the day in between calls. The next room on that same wall would be the gear room. They have direct access through these parking spaces outside. Volunteer or call forth, come in here, park, go right into the gear room, get into their gear, and right in the apparatus bay, and off they go. And vice versa. When they come back, they can go right back into that room so they're not tracking whatever scene they were just on all over the building and contaminating other things. And directly across that would be decon, where they would have their extraction machine that cleans their equipment to get all the carcinogens out of them. And an office, a small office, storage area there. Now, I mentioned it's a three-bay drive-through with a fourth bay. In front of that fourth bay is EMS storage area and their workroom, where they can work on their pumps, their hoses, all their gear, a toolroom, if you will. If they needed to expand that down the road, those rooms could be removed and relocated somewhere in the building. As I said, another door could be added, and that could be a fourth bay inside that current apparatus bay. So, we'll go back to the main hallway down. So, they have a small meeting room if they need to do EMS refreshers, or if, you know, the community room is used, but they need, you know, some places to have a department meeting, they have a meeting room down below just for them. This has been updated. This says general storage, and they're gonna say, "Wow, that's huge." But we don't have a records room up top. We ran out of space. So, what we've done is actually split this room in half. It'll be, the police record storage would be here via a secure area, and then they would have their, a smaller storage area that could be fire-only, police-hand fire, whatever. Across the hall would be an office for the chief, an office for the captain, and then, as I said, four bunk rooms for the full-time staff that we have, and two bathrooms, male and female bathrooms across from that, and then all the mechanical, mechanical and something other word, basically, the stuff that runs the building would be all tucked away, would be all parked, tucked away over in this corner here.
Take a break for a second.
Take a break for a second. So, with that, I'll start taking public comment.
Step up to the mic. Yes, whoever wants to go first, step up to the mic. State your name, please.
So, just your name and your address.
Hi, my name is John Newman. I'm the town bagpiper. In fact, if you don't know me, that's what I do Memorial Day. I had a couple of questions on this. A lot of us are combat veterans, and we live on a supplemental income from the, thank you, from the government. And how much is this door number three gonna raise our taxes?
In the first fiscal year, 2019, there'll be no tax impact for this because the first bond's not due till July of 2020. So, the first year would be, the first time you'd see this on your tax bill would be the 2020 in the fall. The first year would be the Selectment Plan on financing this, getting a 20-year bond. Right now, the tenor of numbers is, I believe it's 4.5% for 20 years, and your first year will be $1.18 per thousand. So, I actually calculated this out for example. So, if you have a $250,000 house, it's gonna cost you about $290, $295 a year.
Now, will the department increase with the increase of the building? Will there be, will this entail more patrolling and different things?
So, when we designed this, we looked out 20 years. We wanted to make sure that this building could, any more than 20 years for myself or the fire chief projecting, we're just throwing darts at a dartboard. We don't know, you know. But we feel comfortable that within the next 20 years, the space that we have in this building will suffice, and we won't have to do any additions or renovations for that. Just because we're getting a new building doesn't mean we're adding staff.
The reason I asked if there's more patrolling of the, of Northwood would come out with this building being where it's located and more police officers? The fact I'm getting to is, since we had 911 prior to that and landline phones, every time there was an accident or a fire, someone had to stop their car and get into a house and make a call. Do you know what the percentage now of 911 calls are with cell phones? Every, you've got eyes and ears. I've called in two myself. Do you know the percentage of what the cell phones call in, the cell department?
I could, I could get that from 911, but I can tell you that it is a daily, if not hourly, occurrence for us. Everyone calls 911 now to report a erratic driver. So, we get a ton of calls of people following the truck. It swears, "Oh, you must be drunk, you must be texting." And they call 911. We go out, stop it.
I checked today, at 911, 70% of the calls for fire and police are at 70% and going up. And it'll be, soon, I believe it'll be 80%. Does that affect the size of the department where you've got us out there? I've already called in two accidents myself. I happened to be right on them, called them in. Do we need that much force when we're out there?
Well, you're not taking the accident report. You need us to come, whether you call it in or not. We need to come and do the report and the investigation, and the fire department needs to put out the fires and take the hurt people to the hospital.
I'm just getting to the point of patrolling the roads continually. It wears out the cars and all the hours for the police department. With the new technology we have today, we should be sizing down, not up.
I don't, I don't get your point. I'm sorry.
Things are, with the, with the cell phones today, the call goes into 911 and out to you, you're on that accident right away. We're everywhere. If you patrolled all day looking for an accident, you'd probably never find one. But the way things are today with modern technology, you get the report within three or four minutes of an accident, and I was saying, do we need that much patrolling of the cruisers when everyone here's got a cellphone?
No, it's not just accidents. Patrolling also deters burglaries, so...
Sir, can, I understand your line of questioning, but this is specific to the safety complex? And we weren't, we're here, we can talk about the construction costs, land costs, interest rate, bond rate. We can address those questions, but as far as like patrolling and what the next 20 years of the cost of patrolling the town, we don't have those numbers.
Well, it does tie to the complex, 'cause that's where everything's gonna come out on the roads where we are, and that's why I'm asking the questions. How is this gonna improve us or not improve us by having this housing? I know it's comfortable. I know this is a town that has one stoplight, and during a storm, during the power's off, there's never a cop down there. We dodgeball through 12 lanes of traffic. I mean, there's just things people aren't happy with, and we're looking at this monster here, and we're saying, do we want to put all that money into this at this time? Give us something that fits more to the size of our town and not $6 million. And I think the town would go with it, but right now, we're looking, I mean, what's it gonna cost to maintain this thing? This is gonna be extraordinary, heating it and all the facility and keeping things tarred. I can't support the price of this complex. I'd like to see something geared down that would fit our town and that we could have good service from it. And, you know, I'm a total police supporter. I get upset when I see this, that all these people are coming against the police department. I'm number one when it comes to backing our police, but I can't back something I don't agree with, and I think we need to look at this and get something that'll fit our pocketbooks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else would like to make some comments, questions?
Glenn, I'm sorry, I came in late. How many fire trucks?
Can we have your name and address for the record, please, for public comment?
Deborah Locke, Ridge Road. How many, how many, I missed how many.
We're gonna close the Ridge Station. The Ridge Station currently houses your ambulance, an engine, and a tanker. So, it'll be three pieces of apparatus in here. They can drive through and drive out. The fourth bay is over here for the boat, a trailer, storage for whatever they have that needs to get out of the chief's vehicle, whatever it is, to get it in here.
I do agree that we need to do something. We need to do something. But to $6 million extent, Farmington built something similar, it's got the four bays, like we're looking at here, for $2.36 million.
Did you get, did you get a cost, did you get a breakdown of the cost?
I did not get a breakdown of the cost.
'Cause we have, tonight, we have a breakdown of the cost. The actual building itself is not, you gotta remember that there's a, there's a boat, Glenn, help me out, what is it, contingency?
There's 400,000 contingencies on the owner's side, which is the town, and on the construction company's side.
So, that's currently in the budget. That's contingency. That's like, that's in case you run into ledge or something when you're doing site development. So, when you break down, the actual cost of the building is 4.6?
It's 4.6.
The actual cost of the building's 4.6. The remaining cost is for the land... The remaining cost is for the land and site, site development to get the land ready for the building.
So I was under the impression that we already owned a bunch of land in town. The town owns a bunch of land.
Yeah, but it's not within the restrictions that we have to stay within in order to build this. You're only allowed.
Okay, so, so the last bond that comes to mind.
School bond.
Was the bond for the gym. We're going to build this gym and we're going to give it to our kids. And you know what? Everybody was like, let's do it. It's for our kids. We did it. It wasn't regulation size. The bond is paid off. The taxes didn't go down. We put out a bunch of money to put into the fire station this year that never got completed.
Well, we didn't spend any of it because, if I may answer that, we didn't spend any of it because the appropriation to, to the fire station was 200,000. When we put it out to bid, the bids came in much higher than that. And the decision was if we can't build, build what we need to build, let's not spend any of the money.
So what happens to the money? Goes in the general fund?
No, money goes back and we use that money to buy down the tax rate this year.
But how much do you think that we can endure? You know, we're all getting old. It's an old community. Granted, there is, there are a lot of young families moving in. But how many bids did we actually get on this building?
We had one, we hired a, a firm to do the design. We, we had a committee, developed, myself, Bob Young, Glenn, Greg LeBlanc.
Jason Miller.
Jason Miller and Tim. Colby. So, so the committee, so we had two public people, two people from public, one selectman, somebody from the police department, somebody from the fire department. In order to get this on the warrant in time for town meeting and look at the design and get this stuff ready, this is what we were able to.
We also met with four construction companies. We went through their proposal bids and we narrowed it down to the company that we ended up contracting with.
And were the other bids as high as this one?
Different fees, absolutely.
It's just, you know, I, I, I think we need to do something for, for the police and the fire. I agree 100%, but I do not think this is going to pass because of the impact that it's going to have on our elderly community. We're a poor community because we're an old community. We've got, what, 4,000 people in town?
Well, a little higher than that. We're about 45, 46 now.
But 2.36 and they have 7,000 residents.
Yeah, but did they build the fire, did they build both or did they?
No, so Farmington did, Farmington did a fire department.
We have, our addition for the fire department was going to be a half a million dollars just for the addition on the fire department.
So I just messaged you that link on your Facebook. It, the building actually looks similar to what we're proposing here today.
But is it the same size? It would be much smaller, I guess.
Do you know what year it was built?
The size matters.
Oh, you mean, are you saying it looks the same as what was proposed last year at the Narrows?
That's what's being proposed right here, right now.
Yeah, but that's the one that you were looking at that you said that was proposed previously. That wasn't what was proposed on at the Narrows addition.
We're, we're looking at four bays. We're looking at what?
You're looking at a complete building. So you're looking at a new fire station and police department all in one building.
It's a Farmington Public Safety.
Public Safety, then you're talking?
It's, it's a combined union.
Okay, if it, but you've got to look at whether they own land. Did they have to buy land? We have to buy land. What size of that building? The square footage of that building? They have to look at what year it was constructed. Building costs have gone up 25% in two years.
19,000 square feet.
So that's a 10% increase right there.
19,000 square feet. And features storage and bunkhouses for both departments. The previous depart, fire, police department and fire department spent about 50,000 a year on utilities. So they're, they're talking, they save utilities. But, look at the picture, Glenn. I think, I think you need something. I really do think we need something.
Hey, Deb, could we, could you meet with Glenn outside of here so I could take out the public comment?
Absolutely. But I think we need something, but I don't think we can afford $6 million.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak?
Thank you, I would. Tim Janderber on Wills Road. I, I think, to be honest with you, that the two things here that are, or have disappointed me the most is the way you've come about it. And I just heard you explain why, the way you came about it. And, and what that means to me is the ends have justified the means. As you know, and some of these people will know, but some won't, I filed a whole bunch of right-to-know requests and I did get some of the answers. And it appears to me, in the way it's worded, that Chief Droule is trying to say that this wasn't a public body. So I brought 91A here. 91A is our right-to-know laws.
Tim, I'll save you a whole lot of time. I totally agree with you. They did not follow the 91A immediately. As soon as you brought those things to my attention, I immediately informed the PD that all these things had to be posted in regards to 91A and they were. And to the best of my ability, I made sure the town answered every single one of the questions. And so you don't need to go into RSA 91A because there was a couple mistakes made when the committee was involved.
This is a public hearing. I'd like to say what I want to say. You know, and, and so I won't drag it on. But it is disappointing to me that someone like you that has been in this business 20 years?
Yeah.
Would be a part of this. I, I'm disappointed, so.
Yeah, in fact, I'm proud to be part of this because over the years, over the 20 years that we've been doing this, there's been various committees and stuff and nobody in this town took a leadership role except Glenn came up this year and some people said, we need to address a problem. If you don't, if you, all due respect, if you don't, if you don't want it, don't vote for it.
And I won't, but I, I would like things to be done properly. I, I agree with Deb that we need something. I, I think, having worked with Chief Droule previously on the county committee for one of these, I, I really expected, knowing him, a very high number. I, I thought he would outdo himself and come up with a number like a $3 million safety complex. I, I just, $6 million blows me away because I know what it costs in Barrington. I know what it costs in, in Lee. I know what it costs in New Hampshire.
What year did they build, what year did they build in Barrington?
So if you doubled it, it's still only a third of this.
Okay, but what's?
So that's one point I'd like to bring up. Thank you. The other one I want to bring up, because it bothers me, is we have a policy in town where anything over $9,999 is supposed to go out to bid. This project did not, as far as the conceptual building. Again, that bothers me because I remember some of the painting bids that were so screwed up because they didn't, they weren't handled correctly. I remember the HVAC system in this town hall that was so screwed up. In fact, I think it lost a very good selectman his job because it was so badly screwed up. And I think it's a real shame that once again, we've shown a propensity to not follow our own rules. And that bothers me a lot. I want to bring up that, and it's another thing that has bothered me since I was on the committee before. And that is the narrow station. The fire department is trying to tell us that we have to keep the fire station down in the Narrows. They say that our insurance rates will go up if we don't keep that fire station. And it bothered me then, somebody had told me then that that wasn't true. I didn't do my homework, so I shut up. I've done my homework this time. And I know that each and every one of us towns in New Hampshire and around the country has an ISO number. Seems to be a big secret. Boy, it is difficult to get that ISO number. I, I can't believe how difficult it is. So it's an insurance services office ranking or rating. And as far as I understand, it goes from one to 10. We're a nine. Almost everybody in New Hampshire is a nine. There are more nines than all of the others together. It's just the way it is because we don't have hydrants. We're a distance from a fire station. If you shut that station down tomorrow, it won't change our nine. It won't make us a town. Because if you've got a fire station, you're a nine, basically is what I was told. So I want to bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Because one of the things that bothers me is why we would expend the money for two fire stations in a town as small as Northwood. It is further from anything where they want to put the station. For instance, Gulf Road. It is not as far to Gulf Road as it is to the end of Deerfield Road on the other way to town, other side of town. You know, and, and so that's not necessary. I do like the idea where many towns, Barrington, Stratford, Deerfield, have a garage that outlies. It's unheated and they can house a truck. And if there's a fire and then to that end of the town, the firemen at that end of the town can pick it up and take it to the fire. It's a great idea. There's one on First Crown Point that every time I take my pigs in, I see. There's two in Deerfield, et cetera. But our insurance would not go up. I think it would be a great idea to take one of those bays, stage a truck, and give the rest of that building to the highway department. So it's just another thing that, that bothers me that I don't think is true. Lastly, or not lastly, I've got two other points I want to make, is the ridge station. When we asked, or somebody asked, what would happen to the ridge station at the last meeting? I don't know who, but somebody said, well, it belongs to the school.
No, the building belongs to the town and the land belongs to the school.
The last thing we need to do is give that building to the school. I, I just can't even fathom why we would do that. For Tom to put his little tiny tractor that he's been trying to get a new one for the last 50 years in there. That, that is beyond me. If there was some idea, like to renovate it, rent it to the SAU at $45,000 a year, which is what we're paying now, I could see something like that. But until those answers are out there, you won't get me voting for this. So anyway, I just wanted to other, to make one more point. Deerfield has tried since, 20 years, since 1999. I think they've tried seven times. In 1999, they got 17% of the vote. The last one, they got 34%. So they doubled, you know. And every one of those buildings was $2 million or less. I, I just can't believe the number. I just cannot believe the number. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak? Yeah, go ahead. State your name and your address, please. Are you submitting written testimony?
Yes, I am. Selectman Brier, Jim Hadley, Old Mountain Road. I would like to first say I think there is definitely.
For the record, could this be entered into the minutes? That this document be put into the minutes included? Thank you. Oh.
There was one for Glenn, too.
Yeah, I got one for Glenn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Steve.
So I think my, I had two concerns when I first came. I think I'm getting a little used to the price right now. I talked to town, town manager, David Stack, who used to be town administrator here. And having now seen the breakdown of the cost, et cetera, I feel a little more comfortable. The other big concern I have, I spoke with the supervisor at the municipal bureau at the Department of Revenue Administration yesterday. And he sort of provided me an overview of what the right-to-know law is and what it encompasses and stuff like that. And I work in Boston, so I can't verify whether meetings were posted or whatever, but several people have informed me that they weren't posted. And I think Selectman Brier mentioned that too, early on, when the committee first met, et cetera. So that's my big concern, that it didn't follow, didn't follow the process under the right-to-know law. And I think it's important that they do that. I know when I was on the board several years ago, we tried a road bond and the state was going to pay 100% of the principal and interest and it didn't pass. It got 59%. We were 12 votes short. So, you know, I'm hoping that maybe on the warrant article, you could have something, contingency on there. If it doesn't pass, that you can continue the, you know, the process to.
We actually have a second warrant article that if it doesn't pass, it's just to buy the land. So there is a contingency.
Is there a contingency to continue looking?
Well, if we buy the land, we're not going to not continue to build on it.
One of the, one of the issues we ran into is we actually was, we went out and looked at, what did we look at? Three pieces of land in different locations of town that were available for sale. This lot, this lot right here was the best out of the three. It had the least cost for site development. The other two would require basically some kind of utility road being dropped in that was going to be quite, I would say there's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars just to drop a road in there.
So to answer your question, I think the second warrant article to purchase the land if this fails, I think that's exactly the way it's worded. If this fails to purchase the land, it would be to continue the development of possibly a smaller building or maybe a less expensive building.
And would the selectman continue the, the study?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, I think.
If we, if we buy the land, of course we would.
We, we're not, I, this isn't something that's, I mean, if this fails, I mean, we would try again because if, I know that there's tours and if anybody would like a tour of the ridge, the ridge is not adequate fire station. And I think a lot of people in this room know it's not an adequate fire station. And, I mean, this will be coming back. I'd also like, you know, and again, too, right, there's no denying, interest rates aren't going down now. They're going up. So if you wait another year, which is fine, if that's what the town wants to do, you're going to pay a higher interest rate. But, you know, if that's what the town wants, that we can, whatever the towns wants, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Sheriff Dean Rootford, what is the plans for the other two stations if this is built?
Again, I'm, I'm not going to, I will. My understanding was talking with the deputy fire chief that we need to have, we can close, when we open the new station, we're going to close the ridge. And if we close it and just leave the building there or give it back to the school, that has not, definitely been determined yet. The police station, we're going to get it listed to the real estate company and we're actually going to sell the police station and use the proceeds from the sale of the police station property to, towards the debt relief on the bond.
Yeah, what about the main?
The narrow, you mean the Narrows?
Yeah.
That has, my understanding, and I didn't do the research, or somebody in the, Mr. Janderbar did. My understanding is I've been told by the fire chief at the, you know, the fire, deputy fire chief, that due to insurance reasons, we had to maintain the one station on this end of town and one station on that end of town. And I, I don't, I didn't do the, I don't know whether, I just took the deputy fire chief's word for it.
It's my understanding that that station two is in need of repair. What's, what's that going to cost to bring it up to grade?
What was going to happen is if we could have repaired that station, we were going to move all the facilities down to that station. Like, right now, they're sleeping at the ridge. We, if we, if we were able to do the upgrade to that station, we were just going to move all the, the, the fire department would, that would become the main depart, the headquarters and ridge would be the auxiliary.
I'm guessing if this building passes, the repairs up there would be minor. We wouldn't have to put new bunks like we were going for.
Oh, yeah, all of those repairs was to make it so the firemen could live there, stay there overnight.
Okay, so the, the amount of repairs that's needed to keep that other one going?
Would go down.
Well, it's actually not a, it's very minimal.
If we get this building.
If we get this building, the repairs at the Narrows are minimal. It was just, we, we were spending our, well, what happened is the bids that came back was, one was about 400,000, like just shy of 400, I think it was 398,000 due to repairs at the Narrows and the other one was about a half a million. at the Narrows, and the other one was about a half a million. So, you know, we waited a year now, so it's probably still gonna be around there. If you, if we build this station, that extensive work down there will not be done because we'll be able to house all the trucks at the new facility.
Because that was not to add a bay, that was just to add-
That was just to add headquarters, showering facilities, men's and women's locker room, bunk rooms. That was not to-
So there wasn't any structural issues or anything like that?
No, it was, it was a renovation, it was an addition.
Not a repair.
It wasn't a repair.
Now, the one on ridge, is that in disrepair? I mean, is, is there something wrong with the building?
I, I mean, I don't wanna, I hate to advertise it, but it's probably not, uh, probably wouldn't pass a fire marshal inspection.
Okay, so it's not something we could even rent or, or do anything with without it costing us money?
Correct.
I mean, I mean, it might actually be, the cheapest solution might be to actually tear it down.
Or give it back to the school.
Or give it back to the school. And, you know, I'm not saying we, you know-
We haven't decided.
We haven't decide, yeah, there hasn't been decided.
I'm just looking to see what the other cost would be besides this.
It's not fit for sleeping, at all.
I don't, it's, I don't foresee there being other costs besides this that are gonna be substantial for a while if this passes. Because we're basically, everything we're gonna need is gonna be in this building. That other building is basically gonna just be a halfway point where they're gonna stay if there's a fire down that end of town or something. Kind of like this one is now.
Not, not people stay, trucks stay.
Trucks stay, or whatever.
Okay.
Kind of like the ridge is, kinda like the ridge is now, but they sleep there. They don't really usually hang out there, they hang out with the other one more than-
They do their trainings down there.
They do their training there. So instead of doing their training at two separate places, they'll be all at one place and they'll be just, that'll be just kind of like the ridge now.
Now, I don't know anything about the insurance thing either, but is that something you guys are gonna actually look into to make sure?
I think-
Is it really not very sensible to have two separate stations if we don't need them?
We can definitely check it out.
Oh, definitely, I agree.
I, I think we will definitely verify that. I, it's not, um, you know, you, you have people that are experts and you like to think that the experts will tell you. And I actually believe we do need two stations, but we need to-
I would like to see someone actually-
We need to verify that, yeah.
Verify it, one of you guys, to make sure.
This is our, um, I'm having a rough night here. Ma, uh, Tetra, and, uh, he's our new fire chief and, uh-
Day two.
And, uh, he, uh, Ma, could you look into that for us?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
It also is response time. People, you have a majority of a call fire department. So a lot of people, I didn't think I said anything funny. Most of the people that are on your department are coming from their homes to the station. So instead of having the majority of your force that used to live in the Narrows, driving all the way through four to get on an engine, they can get to a narrow, you know, they can get to the Narrows within minutes or seconds, get on an engine and be responding with the equipment they need. So that has a lot to do with why you have two stations located on separate ends of the town. So that's just another reason why this town has two stations and a lot of towns have two stations like that.
Ginger Doe, Rochester Road. Couple of different things. First of all, John, I admire you for, where's John now?
I'm John.
I'm John. I know what it's like to be driving down Route Four or whatever and, and seeing an erratic driver or coming across an accident. But there aren't enough of us out there traveling the roads all hours of the day and night who take that responsibility seriously and will make that call. Because they don't want to hang on, they don't want to be involved, whatever the case is. For those of us who do that, kudos to us because police and fire can do all the help they can get. And hey, if fire just started, who's gonna call again? As far as the insurance rates go, I was an insurance agent for many, many years. And unless things have changed drastically, if you lived within three miles of a fire station or you were within so many feet of a fire hydrant, in New Hampshire, you were a class six. If you lived beyond that three miles or you did not have a hydrant, then you were in fact a class nine. Cities like Manchester, Nashua, Concord even, have levels one, two, three, depending upon where the fire stations are. I don't believe that has changed. I could be wrong. It has been several years since I was involved as an insurance agent and broker. The point of having two stations, in my mind, we've got a lot of buildings down in the Gulf area. If we're relying on volunteers, full-time staff combinations to get to the ridge station or the new station, to grab apparatus and then get over to the Gulf. If it's your house burning or if it's you who needs an ambulance, that's minutes that can make the difference between saving part of your home perhaps or getting to the hospital and living. I really believe we need the two. Unfortunately, Northwood is spread out. It, it just is. I believe we need both stations. The reason I am committed to seeing this pass, variety of reasons. I've been to several of these informational meetings, including when they presented it to the budget committee. I've heard different things each time, new pieces that I hadn't heard before. One of the pieces that struck me regarding the ridge station is that the equipment, when we buy it, trucks, ambulance, whatever, the specs have to be different than what the average fire truck or ambulance is. Do you know why? Because the doors aren't big enough to allow normal equipment in. So we have to make them smaller. If another town, this was something that we were told by the fire department, if another town came to Northwood to cover for us because we were someplace else, they couldn't put their equipment in our barn up there because it wouldn't fit. They would have to stay outside. We have kicked this can down the road for years. I've been in town 33 years now and I recall hearing at least 20 years ago talk of building a new fire station or upgrading. The reality is, we can do nothing with the ridge. Absolutely nothing. If any of you have not been on a tour of that station, please do so before you make up your mind whether or not to support this. It's a real eye-opener. It really is. Couple of thoughts that occurred to me, and I don't know if they have any bearing on the facilities that we have or not. Obviously, the living conditions for the fire department are not optimal at this point in time, as you'll see if you do the tour. We've lost full-time firemen, EMTs. We've lost full-time police. Some people say, well, we don't pay enough. Maybe that's part of it. Some people say, oh, well, atmosphere, this, that, and everything else. Maybe that's part of it. But maybe part of it are the conditions of the stations and the jobs they're trying to do with suboptimal space. I don't have to work in the stations. Most of us here don't have to work in the stations, in the space that they have. They do. If you're not happy with where you're working, you leave. I urge you, yes, it's a bite, absolutely. No two ways about it. I'm not looking forward to increasing my taxes. But what are our alternatives? If they close down the ridge station, then all that equipment is gonna stay outside. Subject to weather, potential vandalism, and where's it gonna be packed? It's gonna be packed in the schoolyard because it won't fit between the closed door of the station and the road. It's too long. Please do some thinking about it and think of the pros and cons, what we're gonna lose potentially if we don't build this. Thank you.
Oh, you tricked me.
Anybody else? I thought she was coming up to talk.
I wish I could stay, but I can't trick that somebody else.
I thought you were leaving too.
I'm not leaving, believe me. My name is Rick Wolf, I live on Lucas Pond Road. I'd like to welcome our new fire chief to town. There seems to be a lot of debate about this insurance thing. Seems our new fire chief's here, maybe he could shed some light on it. I don't mean to put your feet in the fire, but maybe you could put some of this to rest tonight. Whether you want to or not, you don't have to, that's, but I'll move on.
We, we do have an appointment with the ISO evaluator and he's gonna evaluate our ISO rating. So I'll have a much better handle on it once I have that visit. I do have a little bit of experience dealing with ISO and my previous job, we lowered our rating from a four to a three. And going down one point didn't make a huge difference in residential insurance, but it made a big difference in commercial. So, like I said, I'll have a better handle when the evaluator comes and-
That was four to three, where?
What's that?
What were you referring, where were you?
I was in, I was in Lynnfield, Massachusetts.
Thank you for your input. There's no doubt in my mind that we do need something in this town, but I just think it's a little bit too much money. And, you know, I know we have conditions that aren't good. I know there's things that aren't right. But I think we need to look at a little less money. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
John Budrow, Main Street. Just want to say I, I got the, I have the privilege of working for both departments. I worked for the fire as a volunteer and I work at the police department as the animal control officer. So I get to see these conditions all the time. And Jen, uh, she was, Jen was completely right about the ridge station. You pull engine one out and your front bumper is on the white line, a Route Four. If we're trying to pull out and trying to close the door behind us at the same time, it's, it's, somebody's gonna get hurt. The comment about closing the Narrows, we got three pieces of equipment. You do not cold storage a fire engine. It carries water. That will freeze and that will bust when you go to use it on, to fight a fire. You can't cold storage a tanker. You can't cold storage an ambulance because of the drugs and the, and the medicines that are on that. Just can't happen. So if you want to go spend a few million dollars here and there around town to build these little storage units for apparatus, by all means, you want to close the Narrows, then Glenn, you need to get your pencil out, make that fire station a little bit bigger for the other three pieces of equipment that gotta go in there. Because we, we have the place to put this stuff. That's millions of dollars of equipment that we can't put outside, okay? So I'm in support of this, obviously. Like they said, it's been bounced around this town way before I got here. And I could design the ridge station the way it is right now and present it to the board to build it for my own personal use and I would get denied. Because it's that unsafe, that building's coming down around these guys. And like I said, if you haven't taught it, tour it. Don't take people's opinions, go out there and learn it for yourself. Thank you.
Joseph McCaffrey, Harmony Road. Delusions of grandeur. We're suffering from it a bit here, I'm sorry to say. I understand that some good points Mr. Budrow just made, some points Ginger just made. We have an obsolete ridge station. I, I, I'm fully aware of that, I've, I've listened to the arguments, I've visited, uh, our stations. I've visited a lot of other stations on the subcommittee I sat on a couple of years back that, that considered this. Unfortunately, we, that subcommittee did not visit enough stations, in my opinion. I visited some on my own. What I became aware of was that there's a lot of ways to skin this cat and we're, we were chosen to do it the most expensive way. Unfortunately, back when Glenn Droule was on the subcommittee that I was on, already there was an impetus on that committee to spend a lot of money. There was. You looked at and you asked, but don't smile, you asked for the Sonnypie Station. That was your favorite, I think you came back with. Very expensive station. So, uh, just to go further with this, the tendency was to spend a lot of money. You know, one of the things that's very dominant in political life, it's easy to spend other people's money. Your taxes go up a little bit, but the entire town, and there's a lot of people, we heard a couple of expressions of it, that cannot afford really to see more taxes. But you don't care. You don't really care. Now, there are fire stations that have been built around, Farmington was mentioned, for half or less and very serviceable, decent fire stations. And some of them are architecturally pretty nice. And, and unfortunately, the choosing of this architect, I find kind of mysterious. I listened to the story, the presentation to the budget committee and another one that was done. It seems to be kind of a personal choice kind of thing, which I find troubling. And what we find is there are no minutes to define what happened earlier. Now, Scott says, well, he, well, he's gone to the trouble now to correct this. After the horse has left the barn, Scott, this should have been done in the first place. This was a responsibility of you and others. And by the way, you sat here earlier, you've been 20 years, I think it's been pointed out. Supposedly, you have some experience with failed ideas that have occurred in this town. I, I'm speaking right now and then you can comment if you like.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Since you have the floor for the rest of the night, okay?
No, go ahead.
Transfer station, uh, any number of things that, uh, the air conditioning system, all kinds of things that have been done repeatedly, poorly done, poorly contracted, poorly vetted in terms of choosing people and writing a decent contract repeatedly. And we're hearing some stuff that's in the brew right now, I'm not even gonna bring that up. But the, the poorly, poorly written contracts, so you can smile, but you might have been involved in the poorly written deal. So I'd like to, we'll find out a little later, okay?
I'm one, I'm one selectman of various boards.
I know you are, but you were there, that's the point. And so, you know, supposedly, experience is a teacher, that's the story we hear. Let me just finish off with this. I'm not in favor of spending $6 million. I think it's a poor choice, it could be done for maybe half. I, I started out, when I first heard, and I've had several discussions with people that were involved in making the decision here, I, I have a certain, there's a certain appeal to me to, to make an improvement here. We need something, the ridge station is a, is an obsolete, inadequate station. I think that's pretty much agreed on. Nothing much that probably can be done other than as a storage place for a couple of engines, a thought. As other towns do, as a staging area, it was mentioned that we need a place to jump off from that's a little closer as opposed to having just one station. The two-station idea may be viable. Improvements at the Narrows could be very viable, there's space there and money could be spent, possibly, but it wasn't looked into. The tendency, as I said in the first place, was to spend money, other people's money. And we now have a $6 million figure. It was intimated early on in this little story that we heard back at the budget committee and other places, we might be coming in around three.
No, no numbers, no numbers.
It was intimated-
We were told, we were told, no numbers was-
We didn't release any numbers until we had the final number.
We had a real number, Joe.
That's right.
For a rec, for a record, we were all told at the beginning of the thing that we would present no numbers until we had a do not exceed number.
I said intimated and it was, and there was a, I didn't say there was a hard number that was given. And in fact, that was one of the problems only two months ago. It was clueless as to what kind of numbers we'd be dealing with. In any case, we're looking at $6 million now. So, I, um, I just think this is too grand for Northwood. I think we could do for less, a lot less. And there, the Farmington station was pointed out, the Milton station, there's a lot of stations around, very nicely done for less money and in recent dollars. You want to go plain vanilla? There's, uh, there's all steel body stations, that is, steel sheeting, so forth, very plain, very, not so attractive, in my opinion, but done for a lot less money. And a number of towns have chosen to do that. But they're serviceable and they do the job and they have a lifespan of 20, 30, 40, 50 years. So, I, one other thing I want to say. We, we heard early on that $19,000 was allocated. The select board here coughed up $19,000 because you didn't have operating money to go forward with the early preliminary proposals, is that correct? Yes, it is correct, $19,000 was mentioned.
Well, give me an opportunity to answer, Joe.
Okay, well, I know it was, okay. I, I mean, you said it several times before us and towards. So, um, that's not the real cost. Glenn Droule, for instance, has mentioned that he has spent a lot of time in the past year, that salary time. His salary, in fact, in, in doing this, and this is a project that he wants to see go forward, and I understand, I mean, it would, it would be nice to have a new, nice police station instead of renovating the one that's down there, which could be done. But, but that salary, for instance, Glenn, is part of the cost of going forward with this. When you were talking to landowners, when you were talking to SMP,[1792.82] When you were talking to landowners, when you were talking to SMP, when you were talking to any number of people, were you not on the clock? All volunteer.
It's called doing my job, running my department.
No, but you were put in charge of doing this, which I think was a conflict of interest or an inappropriate vested interest. Yes.
Well, I was supposed to...
I don't think this was... I don't think... I don't think our fire... Our police chief should have been the lead individual.
Joe, all due respect, okay, you've had about eight to 10 minutes talking all right.
Excellent.
So make it really quick and finish up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No, appreciate it. But this is a public hearing, and I would...
You could... I'll tell you what, Joe. If somebody wants to speak, and when we're all done speaking, if you would like to come up and speak again, I will allow you.
Thank you very much. I would say that, and anybody else who wants to speak for eight minutes, I'd be glad to listen to them, because hopefully they'll have a variety of things to say. So that pretty much sums up, though. I think that early... And just to end with this, the whole process of not open disclosure and whether, you know, I don't think it was for nefarious reasons. I think maybe just people didn't know quite what they should have been doing. But that this, in the subcommittee process of full minutes, so that anybody could go back and see what the discussions were, any discussions that was being had with landowners or anybody else, all of that should come together as a public document, so that people could understand that this wasn't something being done on the sly.
I'm sorry, is this on the sneak, Joe?
What?
I don't know. I gave... We handed out a bunch of numbers tonight.
Now you have.
We had a public information of...
I'm talking about a six-month process, a year-long...
You can come back and ask more questions.
You asked me a question, and I gave you the answer.
All right, thank you, Joe.
If you had that information, would it change your prospect?
David Corson from West Ridge Road, no, West Street. The question I have is that we are able to have some sense of the value of the property in town, so that we could compare the value of the property in Northwood to the value of property in other towns. I'm also losing my voice from something going on in my head. Is there any information where we've been able to get cost per square foot?
We have two people here from the engineering firm that we... Construction Management Company that could tell you a question, what you could answer that question on.
Let me just... I think the way it might be most useful, at least for those that are asking this question, is this too rich a project for Northwood, would be how that cost per square foot, done within the last three to five years, say, was comparable in other communities with a comparable equalized valuation of property. Because then we'd have a pretty solid idea about whether or not we're looking at something that's pretty much like what other people have had to do, or something that is too rich or too little, even. And I don't know if that exists, but if it doesn't, it'd be helpful.
Glenn, would it be inappropriate for me to defer to the company, to see if they could handle that question? You want to try and take that, or...
So I think it's something that we can't answer. At the bottom of the worksheet, we provide a cost per square foot. We should know the value of other public buildings in the local area.
I think that was your question, right?
No, I'm talking about us as a town, what we can afford. And it's based on our equalized valuation of our separate properties and that total property value as a town.
Right, so he wasn't asking cost, yeah.
Because are you talking about what the effect is on the tax rate?
No, no, I'm talking about people trying to just get a general sense. Cost per square foot compared to what other people have built is good, but it'd be nice to know if that cost per square foot was spent by other towns that had an equal property wealth compared to Northwood. Or whether that was something like often happens in our schools, was paid for by a much wealthier town.
I don't think we could answer that question here tonight.
What's the number of cost per square foot? Let's hear about the sheet.
It's on the sheet that we handed out. Could you just tell them what the cost is, please?
The cost per square foot on the building is $280. I'm sorry. The building only is $233 per square foot.
It was $233, no?
$233 per square foot.
So then, so as far as I know, we don't have a cost per square foot of what it costs any of these other towns to build.
I think the question you might be asking is if you go and throws... I know, again, I'm an amateur at this construction stuff, but isn't there catalogs that if you can look up certain structures and come up with the average square... Cost per square foot is for similar structures to, for estimation purposes? So if you were like comparing...
Yeah, so...
I don't have a question here about this cost per square foot so much.
No, but I remember I had taken a finance class once and looking at real estate, and there's these different periodicals and such that you can, if like, depending on what type of building, that could give you like cost per square foot, you could compare that. Would that be something you'd be looking for?
Yeah, that in the context of how wealthy our property value is within Northwood. So if we took these four other towns that have been mentioned, we know what the total property value is of those towns, and if we knew what the cost per square foot was of them to build their complex, we would have a rough comparison, both compared the cost and the wealth of the town, which is what we're really wrestling with, I think. That's what it is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Does anybody else like to speak?
Scott, could I jump in for a second?
Yeah, go ahead. You just got to answer.
Sorry, I don't have an answer to that question. I've really appreciated the comments tonight, and really appreciate where everyone's coming from. We're all concerned about cost. The Farmington Station has been mentioned a few times. It's a great station. I've toured it a couple of times. I know the people who built it. It's larger than the facility that we're talking about here. At the time that it was built, the building only was $150 a square foot. Escalated to today's dollars, it would be about $204 a square foot, compared to our $233. Now, there's a couple of factors there that we want to keep in mind when we're talking cost per square foot. There is a quality consideration. Ours is just a budget. Theirs is a bid price, so that's as completed. Our numbers are budgeted as if we were bidding the project in September. Correct? September, and includes contingencies. And we include contingencies because construction is a risky proposition, and we hold true that we want to come forward with a responsible budget, that we can deliver the project, and any money that isn't spent is returned to the voters. There's no going back. So we, as a team, are committed to delivering this project within this budget. And there are contingencies. There's roughly $800,000 in unallocated dollars within this total budget. And that's because it's a conceptual design. It's not finished documents. It's not fully engineered. There's a lot of work to be done, and if this is approved, when this is approved in March, you all will have ample opportunity to question us about what we're intending to provide. But in terms of comparative analysis, that is a really important question, and we can certainly look at it. I know Bo just opened a station. I don't have the details. But in terms of Farmington, we're not too far off on Farmington. Because it's bigger, inherently, its cost per square foot is going to be lower, because it has a lot of big open spaces. It has apparatus space. So that's just where I'm looking at it, in terms of comparing Farmington Station with what we're intending to build for this town here. I understand the number is concerning. It's our goal to give you the best building and be able to return some money at the end, and that's our stock.
Excuse me, you're speaking as...
I'm the architect.
SMP?
I am. Sorry, my name is Jason LaCombe. I'm the president of SMP Architects. I skipped over that part.
Okay, do we have any more questions? From anybody that hasn't asked a question first, and then we'll go back to people that have already asked one, if that's okay? Is there anybody that wants to ask a question that hasn't asked? Come right up, just... Yep, that's fine. Anybody that hasn't asked?
Cheryl Jackson, Rochester Road. I just wondered, I know that the ridge station isn't habitable. I hear there's mold there and all kinds of other good stuff. I should think that there would be something, if the school does not own the building, it should just be torn down. Give them the pad or whatever it's on.
Burn it down.
All right. Burn it down!
It's a fire training.
Okay, yeah. And all still, so will you come up with bids for this stuff? Who are... How far did you go with the bids, as far as the site work?
Well, just, I'm going to defer to him, but you want to...
I mean, you can't just go with local. I mean, there might be people in surrounding areas that could give you a better...
Yes, exactly. We've already been...
I'm going to give my spiel. So again, Jason LaCombe, I'm the architect. With us is Stacy Clark and Tony DeCosta. They're the construction managers. Stacy is the president of Turnstone Corporation. So at... Working with the chief and the committee, we selected... We went out with a public RFP process for construction management firms. We selected four. We interviewed four. We selected Turnstone, and that was based on qualifications and fee proposals. So in the construction management contract, nothing has been bid yet, right? Other than the selection of the construction manager. They get paid a fee, and they will professionally manage the bidding process and the construction. So ultimately, they'll be responsible for delivering the building. Upon approval, we will be authorized to move ahead with design and engineering, and we'll work with Turnstone to select all the finishes, finish out the construction, select the HVAC systems, do all the engineering, do all the civil design. And all of that will be bid by Turnstone. It'll be competitive with all the subcontractors. There's no intention of self-performing work, correct? Okay, so they are pure construction managers. All they are responsible for is supervising. They'll have staff on site. Everything else is bid, and it will be bid in September, hopefully. And what that means in that process is we'll be able to look at the bids with Turnstone and decide who is going to build your building. That allows us to give preference to local subcontractors, assuming that they're qualified and their bids are competitive. And that's really the goal for any of the municipal projects that we do. We strive to get at least three bids. Sorry, I'm speaking four.
So, yeah, we go with three to five bids? We go with three to five bids, so say, painting. We reach out, and we find out locally here who might be interested. We usually post on a website, so that people can have an opportunity to submit a qualification statement. We want to make sure that any contractor that works on your public building is qualified to do the job, and we'll do it in a timely manner, has the forces to do the job, has the proper insurance, has the proper safety management, so on and so forth. And what we do is we set a bid date. Everybody submits their bids. We go through scopes of work, and then we recommend to typically a building committee, along with the architect. And sometimes, if there's a huge differential and somebody has missed a scope of work, you know, that's where you get the better quality. So each portion of work will be bid based on the documents, once it's fully designed and engineered. Does that answer your question?
Also, another thing, there are a lot of older people in town that are on fix symptoms. There's also younger people who are trying to move into town, and they don't, you know, everybody hasn't got this high-paying jobs. I find that I like the building, but I think it's a little over. I like what it is. If you could like downsize the amount, that would be doable for me. I do want it, but I do think you should consider everybody's... There's a lot of for-sale signs on Route 4 and on back roads. Take that into consideration. They can't afford to pay the taxes. How are they going to live here?
Thank you for your comments.
Anybody else that hasn't spoke yet? Come on up first, the lady right there.
Good evening. I'm Melanie Hamilton. I live on Ridge Road. I have more in observation than a question. I have some experience as a select person. I was a select person in Lyman, up north, outside Littleton, a number of years ago. I've been in town only about four years, and I'm trying to get up to speed as to what's going on here. I don't know enough. But what I heard tonight is that for about 20 years, you've been talking about a fire station. And if the town has known that you needed a new fire station and/or police station, then it seems to me that the effort should have been made, starting sometime back, to start raising the money. When I was a select person, and we knew that we needed either to put up a new building or to buy equipment, we started raising the money and putting the money into a capital reserve fund. Now, what I heard tonight was that there was money that was raised in anticipation of this fire station, but then, because I don't remember what exactly the factors were, but that money was given back to the town. And to me, that doesn't make sense to do that, because then you're going to have to raise the money all over again. And I'm just hoping that if this doesn't pass in March, that we still start raising some money, because we know that we're going to need to do this. You start putting that money into a capital reserve fund and start building your building fund.
We have numerous capital reserve funds. You've lived in town for...
Four years.
Okay. This safety complex thing has never... It's been kicked around for several years. The town is very familiar with doing capital reserve funds, and we have numerous capital reserve funds. Actually, what had happened is I saw the Select Board, after talking with the police chief in the fire department, saw there was a need for... To address a safety-type building. Last year, we tried to put a good effort forward. We were given $200,000. Were required to put everything... When we actually go out to do the projects, we put everything out to bid. We put it out, put an RFP out. The cost to build those buildings came in way, way, way higher.
We had no choice but to use that money.
That bid was just for the narrow...
That was just, yeah, it was just renovation of the Narrows. It wasn't anything close to what we're talking about.
So we couldn't use that money.
That money wasn't for the new complex.
So that money wasn't for the new complex.
So could not have been put into a capital reserve fund.
If we didn't use it for the... The warrant article was so specific, if we didn't use it for the Narrows, we'd have to return it anyways.
Okay, well, then that's part of my education.
And that's why, that's why we decided to go with a 20-year bond, to spread the cost over 20 years. And, you know, a couple of things were said tonight, and I just want to go. I, as a selectman, I knew we needed to do something, and instead of just kicking the can down the road, I says, you know what? The right thing to do is try to address the problem. And I heard a couple of remarks, shame on you, this and that. I saw a problem in town, and I tried to do something about it with the department heads, and if that's wrong, convict me.
It's never easy being a select person. Believe me.
How you doing? I'm Dave.
Say your last name, please.
Dave Foster here. I'm up on Kelson Mill Road. Just had a couple of things. One thing kind of stuck in my mind. You said the first, the first time we're going to see the increase in taxes is going to be in the fall of the 2020 taxes. You said for that increase, we're at 1.18?
Yeah, for every... We actually have a bond schedule that was... We didn't... We have a bond schedule that was for $6 million, and this is basically $6 million. We have to get a new bond schedule for the exact amount. But since the first bond payment's not due till the summer of 2020, the first year would be a dollar 18.
You can't take?
In 2020, per thousand. So for example, I used the example, if you have a $250,000 house...
Right, right.
And then the next point, the next year, it goes down to a dollar 11, and every year it goes down a couple pennies. It is, it's... It does go down every year. It's still a significant amount. I'm not saying it's not a significant amount, but basically, that's the bond schedule. Give you an idea per thousand.
The other thing that's kind of sticking out to me is, and sorry, I'm not the most piecing person, this sucks in my mind, because I hate taxes, so does everybody else, but at the same time, I work for a response agency as well, so I know the struggle of having inadequate buildings and whatnot. But you were talking about that additional bay in the fire department side, where you're building buildings, and later on down the road, if you wanted to expand and have another door there, why aren't we just putting a door there in the first place, instead of going down the road 10 years for crap we needed? Now we're going to pay $150,000, $200,000 for the renovation of that area.
I think that, there were, there's offices where the door would be now that we wanna use. Correct me if I'm wrong? There's two ops, the way I, I take it is, it pulls in and then there's an op, it's like a wall, and then there's two offices, so you'd have to...
Like a decon room and the...
No, so, on the fireside, in that last bay, the closest bay towards the building...
There's two rooms behind it.
Still within the building, the apparatus building, but there are two rooms, if you wanna call them rooms, a work room and a storage area. This can be used as a bay. If they need to expand, all they gotta do is relocate these rooms, put in a door. You're not adding to the building or anything like that, using existing space.
Right, I, I know what you're saying, chief, you're not adding to the building, but now you're talking about more construction going in, re-tearing down those rooms or whatever and installing another garage door. If you wanted to expand, why not just put the garage door there to begin with and...
Well, was it...
'Cause it's a use of space. We're not anticipating having to do that, but if, like, all of a sudden...
If it gets another machine or something like that.
Well, if you, if all of a sudden development comes in, or something that comes in that requires a ladder truck...
Right.
You need to house that somewhere, that's where we would do that. So it's not anticipated to have to renovate that, but if something 20 years, 30 years from here, it's built into the ro, uh, built into the space, so you can add it if you need to. So if we just left it empty, you just, it's empty space, but we're utilizing it for these two rooms. In the meantime, if we don't need it, great. If we do need it, it's there, type of thing. So that's the view out, if you will.
Okay. And just my last thing, to my own personal curiosity, how many full-time, how many full-time force between fire and police?
Fire has full, four full-time.
Okay.
The police department has, all considered civilian and sworn 12.
How many part-time for each?
Well, so I was just wondering about full-time, 'cause I'm on a 22-person team with something a lot less than 16,000 square feet. So that's, so with the public eye, the downsizing aspect, I can somewhat see that and appreciate that. Because like I said, I work on a 22-person team that's a much, much smaller office area, and response vehicles have to stay inside and everything like that, so, I mean, yes, I'm for it, but if you could just please look at the whole downsizing aspect. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep, anybody else? Second round? Come on up, second round.
Well, she was before you for the second round, so...
Cheryl Lee Woodford. I have a question. The garage in front of Harding Metals, is that ours? Is that the fire department's?
Yes.
It is. What is that used for?
Forestry truck.
It's a what?
Forestry truck is housed.
There's no heat in that building, so the forestry truck is there.
It's just a garage base.
But the equipment can be stored without heat?
Well, it's a, just a forestry truck. It's a forestry truck.
It's summertime, like forest fires.
Okay, so it's not actually towns, it's the states?
No, it's, it's the towns, I think, it's like a mold, army, vehicle.
Well, we got it from surplus, the state with surplus property, came from surplus property.
Like a 1960-something?
They're gonna use that during the summertime, so they just shut that truck down, there's no water in it, and they just co-store it in that building.
Now, is that staying open too, or is that moving over?
Well, that, that's just a storage unit. That's, nobody actually works down there, it's only their house.
How many, how many vehicles actually sit in the garage part of the fire station?
I don't know, uh...
I think is what you're asking, right?
You asking...
Yeah, right.
I believe in the conversations with the fire department, they would not need to store that down there anymore.
Okay, right. So we would, what, sell that?
The building?
Yeah.
We could. Could be considered that.
Oh, I'm just trying to compact our...
It could be, it could be considered. I mean, we could do something like we're doing with the, if this passes, what we're gonna do with the police station, put that up for sale. I mean, yeah, that's...
Do we know, how, how much properties is there?
I think it's a, if you maybe walk around it...
So maybe Harding would be interested?
Right, or maybe a butter house next to it.
Possibly.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, oh, you haven't had, come on up.
Oh, it's your first time?
First timer.
I apologize, I was at work, so I got here late, so if you already talked about it.
No, it's okay.
I was just wondering if a...
Just can I have your name and...
Oh, Suzanne, I'm on Lower Deerfield Road. I was just wondering if this doesn't pass, what the plan is for the ridge station, because it, it is unsafe to the point where people shouldn't be in there. So what, do we have a, a plan B in case people don't vote on it?
We do not have a, we would, we would have to revisit it in the next budget cycle. We don't have a plan to address it. If this fails, the ridge, we have to go, we wouldn't be able to do anything till the next budget cycle.
So what do you do with the people that are in there and, and with the fumes and everything else?
Well, actually, the fumes have been addressed. We put, we...
In the mold and...
We contracted out a company to put an exhaust, so all the exhaust gets pulled sucked out of the building now.
Okay.
So we, we actually had that put in.
All right.
And we, there was also, so, what I'm saying is, we did a, a fix for now with the exhaust, but if this does not pass, we just have to wait another year.
Right, we still have the mold and road issues.
I mean, we still, we just have to, we'd have to deal with it and wait another year.
More than likely, we'd have to come back with a warrant article to fix that building. More than likely.
Well, we can't fix it. You can't fix it.
Well, fix one of the buildings.
It moves when the wind moves.
I just don't understand how people can be at work and be in an environment like that and everybody be okay with that.
We're not okay with it. I think it's disgusting that mice crawl across them when they're sleeping at night.
Yes.
That's why this year, we, we put in the exhaust thing, we were proposing the safety complex, 'cause we do not, we do not think it's a good work environment for our employees.
But we do have another warrant, if this does fail, to...
Well, just to buy the land.
Buy the land.
Oh.
I mean, it's...
But you can't build anything on it till you get the money to follow you.
Okay. So, other than that, there's not really anything to help the guys and the women in there?
I mean, we're trying to do something.
Well, I hope people would understand that when they go to vote, that it's disgusting. And, you know, unfortunately, I don't want my taxes to go up either, but I do want people to be safe and...
Did you tour it? I toured it.
Oh, I used to volunteer there, so it was bad then.
But the police station is no better. It really is not any better than...
No, I know. I just know more about the fire station, and I know that, how bad the building is, and, you know, I don't wanna see anybody's husband, wife, or kids in that, so, I was just, that's my question, was just if you had a backup plan, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rick wanted to talk again.
I just have a quick question. My name is Rick Wolf, Lucas Pond Road. I'm looking at this building, is there a foundation under it, or is it on a four-foot frost wall, or, what am I missing here?
Full foundation, 'cause it's a, the fire department's downstairs.
So, there must be other rooms that are being used in the basement, is there a floor plan of them?
Hey, she showed the floor plan.
She showed all of them.
She showed it.
The red, the red one was the basement.
That's what I'm asking. I missed that.
Glenn, can you show the, the basement floor plan again, please?
I never heard anybody mention basement floor plan.
Well, technically, it's the first, it's all four level.
It just sounds fancier when you say first floor. Yeah, there you go.
You caught up now, you're good?
I have, I have, I'm not prepared to be...
All right, anybody else?
Just a quick follow-up for Glenn. It was mentioned earlier, something about potentially fixing up the police station, whatever. Glenn, could you please explain what the limitations are at the police station, what can or cannot be done, and why we're looking at this? I think it's important for them to know.
The police department is, what you see is what it's on. So, as you see, our parking lot is right on the wetlands, and the property line is about three feet to four feet behind the building. So we can't expand left or right. Only thing we could do is go up. And at that point, the phrase that I was told by a, a construction person when I did this eight years ago was, "You're just shining a sneaker." Not, you know, to raise that building, you're looking at a hundred thousand just for an elevator for the second floor? And that's before you even start building? But the problem is, we don't solve the fireside. So this situation solves both. It solves their problems and solves our problems.
Go for it. Try to make it quick, 'cause we still have another meeting after this. We have an actual selecting meeting after this.
All right, I'll be sympathetic. As you notice, I was a little irritated, I think, as I, as I went through the, my, my view of things. And just to address what was just said, I appreciate the, the footprint that the police station is on, is a small area, but, but wetlands can be allowed for, and zoning, or zoning board and the state also allow for expansion under certain conditions, and they might easily be satisfied there if we're talking a room or two or three. So that's, that's, there's a possibility of expanding there, not going up. Just better utilized, the garage, the garage kinda sucks. The chief unfortunately has files stored in there. I don't think that was a good idea to begin with. I know he doesn't have the space, but I think there was other ways to address it. The town, by the way, this town, Hall, we send our excess files every, as we hit five years, they go to, to a storage, which we pay for, not too much, it's $65 a month, I understand, if I remember that correctly, Sandy.
It's here, it's just on the building, not the whole town policy, so we can stick with the, the building right here.
No, no, no. What?
Yes, our meeting right now is just on that building right now. It doesn't have to do with dealing with the cash and...
The police, the police station...
Or dealing with...
Tim, I don't think you, you missed something. The police station is part of that. And it was just brought up. The police station is part of this in the future, Tim. Did you miss that in the meetings? Come on, what are you talking about?
So I think you're talking about the storage, the police storage?
All right, let's, one person at a time.
I don't care for the kibbutzian, and he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Well, he's on the committee and...
I know, and that's a problem.
Joe, Joe, just finish with one thing.
Okay, let me, so, let me, okay. I was distracted. Apologize. The, I think this is, as I said before, a high-priced item. I think that it was expressed earlier, is a possibility of perhaps compressing this a bit or getting it down. I think it goes beyond our needs. It's a town, by the way, and all the projections that we've done, I said on the planning board, we don't have large expansion in our future. Some expansion, not huge expansion, unless something happens strange along the seacoast that pushes everybody up here, and that, right now, that's not in the offer. So, and as a matter of fact, to add to that, we are, as expressed earlier, an aging community. Over half our population is in the aged category. My hair proves that, but there is quite a few, and those folks not only often fixed income and other issues that caused them not to wanna spend a whole lot more money, but would like adequate facilities. There's no question that something needs to be addressed, and I agree with you earlier, Scott, that you saw a problem, as was expressed many times by many people, and you, you, you went along with that. That's fine. So were other people. The planning board, in fact, was doing this three years ago. I think that's right, three, maybe four.
So why didn't they come with a plan?
What?
If they were working on this three years ago, why didn't they...
Well, because, because, because there was no interest further. And, and just as you were presenting now, it went before the town, and the town turned down the ideas that were being, being offered.
The planning board on CIP, there is a safety complex.
Well, that's a good point.
Joe, here's the great thing, though.
But the CIP is different, and that's a good point, by the way.
Joe, this is the great thing about this, though. You can, the town can turn this down.
Yes, they can. No, I understand.
Yeah, I know. It's not like we're trying to slip something in.
And let me say, and let me say, in regard to this, I think this is very good, that what we're hearing from a variety of people, and, and I wish more would participate, as I, you know, and I, I sit on a number of boards myself, and when we have meetings like the planning board, and we ask people to come in for our master plan, and, you know, three people show up, and it's gonna affect 4,200, 600, whatever people. And that's an odd thing and an unfortunate thing. But at least here, what, what's interesting here tonight is a number of people have expressed some ideas, which weren't, I mean, you know, there's three people doing whatever your due diligence is, trying to come up with ideas, but you're limited to your own ideas, and whatever you hear and whatever you come up with on your own research. When you put 10, 20, 100 people together, you hear a lot more ideas, and some of them are good, some of them stink. But nevertheless, what happens is, a, a much better mix comes out of it. And I think that's a little bit what's happening, and I wish more of it would go on. And I would like this to, I, I want this to be turned down, but I want it to be discussed a lot more, because it is going to affect people's back pocket. The only time people really care in this town, if you go and pinch their back pocket real hard. It's unfortunate, but that's the way that goes.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay.
You haven't talked...
Is there anybody, I, I'm gonna actually, if anybody hasn't spoken, we do have a select ment's meeting after, I'm gonna let, anybody who hasn't spoken say their piece, and then we gotta move on. So you're the last person.
Unless it's somebody else.
That hasn't spoke.
Well, you don't know me. I'm Gil Maxfield. I'm a newcomer. I've only been here for 15 years. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight. Some of it's been really good. You have to put up with me, because I get a little nervous in a room with more than five people, so...
Understand, well, I do too. You do? I do. Don't go.
I've had some great discussions here. Been some negative, some very positive. But I think we have to look at this a little different than we are. This building is going to cost $5.9 million. That means absolutely nothing. We have two buildings, both of them in total disrepair. They won't do the job that they're meant to do today, not in the future. They've already proved in figures that you can put this money over a 20-year period of time. That building isn't over a 20-minute, a 20-year build period of time. That building will be here 40 years from now. Construction costs are right in line with the rest of the industry. What you have to realize is that we're going to put new electronics in there, we're going to update it for the future, we're going to be able to do the jobs better, and that's the approach that we should take. The money, it'll come. Interest rates are the lowest they've been in. My first house that I built 60 years ago had 5.1 inch, 5.1% interest rate. You're talking about 4.5%. This, this can work, but we have to take it with a positive attitude and take a look at what this community needs. It's going to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With that, I'm gonna close the public here.
Before I close, I just like to ask one question. I've been asked by several people, Keith, I know you volunteered many times to put our meetings on YouTube, would you mind putting this one on YouTube for people? Thank you very much. Now we can close.
Okay, I'm gonna close the meeting. He had it to come.
I'll be sure.
Go ahead.
When the station went in at the ridge, many of us that live in East Northwood felt that Nottingham was our best bet. Jack Crowley's house burned, Nottingham was there. Jack Crowley's house burned, Nottingham was there. We're too far from the station that's currently up in the ridge. Now, the new station would be fine if you get the price down, we'll buy it, but this is not gonna fly. The voters are looking at this amount of money, you know, a town with one light. Get something we can live with, but here's the thing. That ridge station is being great for us with a, with a truck there for East Northwood, because we got East Northwood people living here. I'm like ten miles from the station up here. If you go down Deerfield Road, as Tim said, and you go up on the mountain, you've got twelve, thirteen miles from the station. We got Deerfield and Nottingham, but we live in Northwood and pay taxes here. The town is so long and so big and spread out. It's better to think about this. If we're not gonna go with this, let's have the engineers redesign that ridge station, so at least we have a truck in this end of town to give us some protection down there, and not have to rely on other towns to send mutual aid over, because that's what happens. And you know what? You try coming out of the Narrows up here at 5:30 in the evening in the traffic, you know what it's like down in Northwood. Try Labor Day weekend and Fourth of July and get a truck from there down to my house. I'll be out there with the host putting out the ashes. It's just a hard reach, and I'm not coming against the complex. It's too expensive. I think we need to have a station that's suitable, that fits all our needs, because we live here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess before we go to our actual selectmen's meeting. Thank you. We're now in recess. We're gonna do citizens' forum. Does anybody really wanna talk?
No, don't do so. They have citizens' forum over there.
Citizens' forum, nobody's gonna speak. All right, we're now gonna return to our meeting, and we need to entertain a motion to go on the non-public under RSA 91- A- -3A and B.
ND.
ND. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Don Hossen, aye.
Beth Boudreaux, aye.
Scrapper, aye, aye.
We're gonna do John Boudreaux first, then we'll do you next, so we need everybody to step out while we take care of him, and then we'll come get you when we're ready. Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna make a motion to come out non-public?
You know what, the safety compliance is cheaper than the wall.
Wait, Rick, who's gonna play that boarder wall? You are.
Roll call, Don Hossen, aye.
Beth Boudreaux, aye.
Scrapper, aye, aye.
We are now on a non-public? I'll make, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to seal the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, most, the minutes are now sealed. We need to entertain a motion.
Do you have an agenda now? I found my agenda.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to, um, um-
We're gonna terminate the contract with-
Terminate the contract with-
Mr. Reeves.
You've got notes there, right?
Yeah, I took your notes.
Yeah, with some motions.
You know what the notes say.
Oh, you need to make a motion to terminate the contract for Reeves Trucking.
So moved.
And you need to make a motion to hire Todd Abbott.
Let's do one at a time. Any discussion?
Nope.
Have a none. Call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll do the second one.
A motion to hire Todd Abbott is a contracted plow, gentlemen. Sixty-five dollars now for his one-ton truck.
And Sander?
And Sander with plow. Gotcha.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing any discussion?
I think, his name is Tad. I think he said Todd. It was Tad. Okay, Tad.
My only discussion is, is what we talked about is, we just need to make sure that he is aware that the town comes first before-
Town's priority.
Town's priority before his business, and also- Huh?
Till you get a phone call in the morning?
Or in like five hours.
Also, just make, well, I don't think he'll be able to do this storm, because he hasn't provided us his information, his insurance insurance.
Yeah, he can't, he can't do this storm.
So after he provides the information, we'll be able to put him on the next one.
Yes.
Okay, and we have no more other, any more besides?
Not from the non-public, no.
Okay, so we'll move on, accepting the minutes. I'm not even gonna discuss the wage study.
The minutes, the lady hasn't finished her review.
We're not gonna discuss the wage study today.
Okay, you guys-
Assessing forms.
Oh, manifest. Let me do the manifest.
There are none.
Manifest.
Okay.
You have a payroll manifest due to the seventy-two-hour rule? One. And then you have regular vendor this week.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the check register, 2019 number one, in the amount of-
Two thousand thirty dollars.
No, it's two million?
Is it two billion dollar school payment? See it on the note?
What'd you buy?
What'd you-
A school.
Uh, in the amount of two million thirty thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
And the discussion is this two million dollar, what, why are they getting two million dollars?
Cobran's dues are done, done-
Tuition?
Yeah, tuition for Cobran is- Yeah, dues.
Any more discussion?
Tuition for Cobran is August to January.
Any more discussion? CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Three zero.
And then, uh, I have a, where's the other one you had?
Payroll's here.
Oh, it's awful skinny.
It's one person.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the final payroll check register, two hundred, uh, 2019 P number one B, in the amount of two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
Any discussion? CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Okay, all right, we are on to purchase orders.
Purchase orders, here we go. I need John Boudreaux for this one. I have a purchase-
John, she needs you.
Focus. You wanted to talk, you wanted to sell this to them. This is for Burgess repair?
Yep.
For, I can't explain what it is.
It's the one ton. That is the other side. We had the, the right-hand side done on the front wheelbarrow. This is going to be for the left-hand side, front wheelbarrow. Also, that's in there for rear wheel studs. I guess the history of that truck is it had issues with the rear duals coming loose, the rims, and it's eaten into the studs now, so we've, we've ordered the rims, and that's to replace the, the wheel studs, and unfortunately with those, that truck, you have to take the axle out, so you got real seals and all that stuff.
There is an estimate attached. It's the amount of one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents.
And it should break it right down, what's, what's what now?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
I have a second purchase order for Irving Energy Distribution for the Highway Department. It's a blanket purchase order for two thousand dollars. It will be one of three, I can tell you, because that's not enough for the year, but it's for the fleet of, uh, fleet of fuel for the trucks.
So moved.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
I have a purchase order for, purchase order for Heritage Hardware for the Highway. It's a 2019 blanket, for one thousand dollars for general supplies, small parts, tools as needed.
So moved.
Second.
I have a 2019 blanket purchase order for Sandal Auto Parts for the Highway Department, the amount of one thousand dollars.
Oh wait, he didn't call the vote. Three to zero.
All, all favor? Aye, sorry, I'm-
She's going fast.
Better know, I missed-
Well, you still gotta vote.
Right. I missed it, it's been a long night. I missed it.
All right, I'll move, uh, maintenance repaired truck blanket PO for 2019 with Sandal Auto Parts in Pittsfield, New Hampshire.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, now looking at this, I have a question.
With which one? Let's do this one first.
Irving?
Yeah. It's too late, it's already been approved.
Well, you may have to rescind your vote and redo it.
Why?
Because they've got two of them here.
Why do you have two?
I don't know. One of them should be Irving Energy for diesel.
This is Irving Energy District for, this is for BACCO.
That should be Irving Energy, not Irving Oil.
It does say, it says Irving Energy District.
Okay, then I read it into the, I read it into the record.
Is he gonna deliver it? All right, yeah, all right.
Call for the vote on the one we're doing.
Wait, which one? I got a question about the off-road diesel.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the BACCO one?
Yes.
So here's my question. Why are you buying off-road diesel?
Because the off-road diesel doesn't have the road sulfur in it. It's cheaper, it's better for the engine for the BACCO, because the BACCO is all-
Okay, 'cause I'm just talking because, uh, why, it's, how's it, isn't, they have to use what, well, what?
It's better for the equipment.
But isn't it the same diesel? Because you have to use the, oh, you wanna use the higher sulfur or the lower sulfur?
It's the, it's the higher sulfur for the off-road, right?
Yeah.
It's the higher sulfur for the off-road.
I thought they had to do with, away with that, because the environmental-
Not for off-road. Not for construction equipment.
All right.
On the road, yes.
Because it doesn't matter, because we don't pay taxes on either one.
Right, right. But it's better for that equipment.
All right, I'm just asking.
Illegal to use them.
All right, so I'm gonna call the vote on the, the one that we're talking about, which is the blanket for the repair for, just to know.
Now, you know you can't.
All favor?
You know you can't use that on road.
Absolutely, yeah. Oh, absolutely. They have those little dipsticks that they check it with.
That's, that's what I run. That's my job, that's one of my jobs over the state.
So when you call him a dipstick, it's really true.
I don't ask, no, they have the troopers do that. They just run the program.
Okay, so I have another blanket purchase order for Irving Oil Marketing. This is for the fleet from regular fuel. This is ten thousand dollars, standard blanket.
Second.
Along with that, why you sign that, so let you know Irving is out now that they're shut down because-
Yeah, so where are you gonna buy this?
Any discussion?
We're using Exxon right now.
And we're up to the mobile.
So then we don't approve this. How long is, how long is Irving out for?
Uh, three weeks. Three weeks. I told PD three weeks today.
So five weeks?
Because we can still uncover the funds.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna approve it till they reopen.
Okay.
So I'll-
So there's no point, we're not gonna lose the money till they reopen.
So I have one for American Alarm. This is for the alarm system at the Highway Garage.
Huh?
It's three fifty, so in two weeks we'll sign it.
So they got no gas for nobody, or just for our trucks?
I mean theoretically, theoretically, if you sign that, they could take the town credit card and run up the conkin and buy fuel.
It could.
And that's all-
That doesn't make, that's not feasible, though.
Right, they use Exxon cards we got as a backup, and we got those on the list.
All right, so that's fine.
Okay, again, so I'm back to American Alarm, blanket for three hundred and fifty dollars. It's for the Highway Security Building.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like some discussion, and maybe we can get the new town administrator, when she's here. Can we get access to the cameras that we're paying for down there?
Yes, in fact, I'm gonna talk to Glenn about that anyway, but it has to be on that computer. I don't, it doesn't matter, but we don't even have access to them at all. So any discussion? Call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Huh?
Yeah, if you don't have access, what's the point of having a camera?
Well, that's the town adminis-, well, wait. There was a, well, there was a policy adopted by the town that the town administrator would review the cameras and let the selectman know, but I think we wanna revisit that policy.
Yeah, absolutely. I would definitely let the PD involve in that.
I have a blanket here for Reeves. My, my question becomes, because of the vote they just made, do we owe him?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a purchase order for five thousand dollars for Eric Reeves.
Well, how much do we owe?
I don't have that.
We don't know yet, we have an exact number.
He hasn't, he hasn't given us a final.
So what we'll do is we'll pay down and I'll close the purchase order and dump the bag.
Do we owe more than five thousand dollars?
I don't dare say, because I don't know what they have, because he did not turn in any bills when Sandy put it out.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, sign a blanket purchase order with Eric Reeves DBA, Reeves Trucking Excavation, with the understanding that this is just to pay his outstanding balance and that he's no longer a vendor.
Right.
Second.
We, we-
So moved.
Call for the vote?
We've reached out several times. Well, Pete has reached out several times to him to get this.
Beth seconded it. I moved it.
Call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I have a blanket purchase order for Robert Caffmeyer for winter plowing, 2019, the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, I'll second that. I second.
Any discussion?
No.
Call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
I see some-
Are these guys like handing bills in after the storms?
We have a- But then we just blank, we-
We have a blanket PO just so we-
They can pay them out and they don't have to come back to us again.
They'll keep coming back.
I have a blanket purchase order for D.L. Delco for winter plowing and sanding in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Two trucks.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Uh, just for the record, this is the way we do it every year.
Some of these blankets, I think, a low, will be back with more.
Yeah.
Usually we do it in ten, twenty thousand dollar.
We give them a chunk of money so they don't have to keep coming back to us for every little bit.
The next one I have is a blanket purchase order for DeMaris Enterprises for 2019, plowing and sanding, the amount of five thousand dollars. We'll be redoing that.
Any discussion? All favor?
Well, I was gonna move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
You know, she's trying to take these minutes. She needs direction. You gotta make a motion and second.
We're on a roll now.
She needs a lot more direction.
My bad, yeah. She's on Facebook right now, anyway.
Yeah.
I have another blanket purchase order.
Texting her boyfriend.
I have another blanket purchase order, Morton Salt, 2019, for winter salt, twenty-five thousand dollars.
That'd be Martin Salt with Salt?
Morton.
Oh, Morton.
So moved.
I'm a Mainer, I have an accent.
Any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye. Motion passes three zero, in case anybody wants to know where all it costs.
I have a ten thousand dollar blanket purchase order for Fillmore Industries, winter sand.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I have a 2019 blanket purchase order for Dave's Painting and Cleaning. This is for the janitorial services, two hundred and ten dollars a week. They bill every other week, ten thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for the whole year.
Who's that for?
The janitor service that we have.
Here?
Yes, Town Hall.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye.
Second.
Motion passes three zero.
I have a purchase order here for Primex for the liability insurance of forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Worker's comp insurance is thirty-eight nine hundred and twenty, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Total purchase order, eighty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Invoices and quotes are attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Motion passes three zero, unless somebody wants to say nay.
No, it's a nay.
I have another purchase order for Primex. This is for the unemployment insurance. The amount went down. It's two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars for the, for 2019. Invoice, or quotes attached.
So moved.
Any discussion? Oops, sorry. Any discussion now? CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I have a purchase order for NHMA, New Hampshire Municipal Association. These are the municipal dues for the town to become members for the year 2019, to remain members for the year 2019. The amount's three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. The annual dues for the town is, as a whole.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
CNN, call for the vote. All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
I had a, I had a purchase order for Mainstay. I'm gonna withdraw it. They haven't gotten back to me on the contract. We usually do a twelve-month contract, so I did a twelve-month purchase order.
Thought we decided to do six months.
They haven't responded to that six-month request.
Pushing that back.
So I'm gonna retract this from here and wait till we hear, because I haven't, I want, that was one of the things I talked about. I haven't heard back from them.
That's it, right?
The purchase orders, yes.
All right.
I got a letter here from Primex. You're gonna love this. We have premium holiday, again, and this is for the worker's comp, which means they are kicking-
We're getting money back.
Back eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. If the board would approve that.
So moved.
Just so it's in the record.
All favor? Aye, we love money.
Unanticipated funds, so.
Free money's always nice.
Okay.
Well, just so I know it's approved.
We just gave a whole bunch.
I don't know if it's really free money.
It's not free money, but it's unanticipated.
Money back, how's that?
It's a reason.
Yes. Um, I also have another letter from Primex. We're gonna get a premium holiday for unemployment, from last year's unemployment claims that didn't get filed, and they're returning two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars unanticipated revenue. I need the board's approval.
So moved.
To accept them.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. That goes back into the general fund, correct?
It does. I have, let's see, Department of Safety. We got the letter, the Warm Zone grant we applied for last year was granted in the amount of six thousand dollars, so the board needs to accept those as unanticipated.
Is that a hundred percent match, or do we-
I don't know the grant. I've given the copy to the fire chief, but the money has been awarded to the town.
Okay.
And I, it was the Warm Zone grant that-
I remember, I think I remember him saying that to cover a hundred percent.
And our EM director had applied for.
Right, I think that was a hundred percent.
I don't know anything about this. What is it?
It's gear.
I think it is for gear. It's for safety gear for the fire department, if I recall. I'm trying to remember the conversation we were about.
We got a grant?
We did. The grant got accepted. If you wanna read that, you certainly may. That's the letter from Department of-
Warm Zone?
Is that like Warm Zone, like it's summertime, or?
No, like, like Kevlar vest for the fire department, Kevlar, that kind of stuff.
All right, so we need to accept it?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Um, just for the future.
Do we have to like pay money for the grant?
Yeah, well, I think it's a hundred percent. I think they paid all the-
Oh, what is, is it a hundred percent?
I don't know the details of the grant. I know-
I vaguely remember, I think-
I know it came before the board last year when they were writing it.
Right. And we did say you could go for it. I'm almost positive it was a hundred percent.
I have an award summary sheet from New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security, FEMA. I have, um, an award summary sheet from New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security, FEMA. The storm last March that we've been working on to get the paperwork in, we did qualify. They're gonna, um, give us a, award of ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine cents towards the cost of that storm. And the board needs to accept that as unanticipated revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Maybe we can pay for the safety.
I know, we just need like, yeah.
Thirty-six thousand dollars. I'm trying to get you guys as much money back as I can, I can.
This is the most money we ever received.
Yeah. Oh, oh, we got more going out, we even have, um, group two, this has to be signed by the Board of Selectmen. You need to certify a full-time fire chief position. We don't have a certified position with New Hampshire Retirement, so I have filled it out, but it needs to be certified for our new full-time fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, CNN, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
So.
And while we're on the subject, um, can you let us know when you get his pin so we can schedule a pinning ceremony?
You have to order him a helmet as well.
The shield. He has a helmet. He is by the shield.
Scott would like to.
I would like, uh, I, I will be out of town, I'll be out of town, uh, the twenty, uh, twenty-first to, uh, that Friday.
So even if we have to pull a special meeting just for that before he goes out, as long as we post it twenty-four hours, Scott would like to be a part of that.
Yeah, I think they just ordered his, his.
Will we go down to the station and get that then?
Probably.
Or should we do it like it, while they're de-powering meetings, so we can do it in front of people?
I guess we'll kind of try to figure it out as we get closer to when it comes.
Okay, I have a selectman's deed to be signed. This is for the property that was auctioned off last fall. We did get the payment in full. Um, Ms. Blue, before she left, she did the deed up and left me a note that this one needs to be signed tonight, so we can get this out with Rockingham.
So moved.
The new one for BOS to sign. I'm gonna take that back. It's all signed. I don't know what she means by that. We'll take that out, strike that. Sorry, I should have looked at that. I have the supplemental reports from the wage study and Aspore from last meeting. There's a copy for EGV to review.
Can we, um, yeah, I'd like, we need to push this off to another meeting.
I just want to give them to you so you can review them.
It's better.
Thank you.
I have a letter thanking the former, um, fire chief for his three years of service and for hanging in there for the remaining as the acting fire chief until we hired for the full-time position.
Did we order a plaque yet?
Not yet. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get everything caught up here.
That's fine.
Um, but I do need the board to sign it. I think it's, it's not staying independently signed.
Absolutely.
So moved. There's some gunk on it.
I don't know, it's in this pile.
But, uh, maybe we can get, maybe we can get Trinity on or.
Getting a plaque, yep.
I think it's like a trophy placing. Isn't it conquered?
Signor.
Where is it?
Signor does a good job.
Okay. Am I getting the information? Do you know the information? Can you get it to Trinity?
I can give it.
Do you mind? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, and I have a, I have a request from Linda to remind the board, um, that she needs the BOS report from you for the town report to publish that. The Board of Selectmen always put a report in the town report?
Don't we normally just use the same one we use every year?
Well, I would hope not.
No.
Isn't that what we did last year?
You write it with heartfelt.
You guys do. There you go, DJ. Good job for you.
I'll be in tomorrow. I'll work on it tomorrow.
I don't know if she's in tomorrow.
Call Sandy. She'll call you back.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Rate it quarter of five.
Three days later.
Hey, I don't play with it. It's the, it's the corner office. I swear it does it to them. It's like their phone goes.
Yeah, but I'm in the back room. I'm out here in the.
Same things.
The back room.
So think about the positive things that happen this year.
I'm not good at writing that stuff. Who wrote it last year?
Then you can, you can ask one of the other board members to write it.
Scott, would you like to write us the letter?
For what?
He does have twenty years' experience.
I'm not sure.
The, who wrote it last year?
Town administrator that you got.
Joe wrote it?
So.
No, he was.
Beth, would you like to write?
I'll take a stab at it.
Did you guys get your side?
Scott's gonna take a stab at it.
When you need, when you need it, when you need it, boy.
She wanted it yesterday.
Oh, gee, I, I gotta tell you, it's not a priority for me right now.
I understand, but she, we have to get it to print. It has to be printed.
When's it gotta go to print?
She's gonna be in tomorrow. I don't know. I know she's in Thursday.
She's in Thursday except a meeting.
Hey, is the fire, is the fire chief on here? Did, did, remember we told him to go back and, uh?
Um, he was on the original one. I don't think they amended that one. He's, he's on there though.
I'll swing in tomorrow if she's here. Maybe I can try to figure out something.
Yeah, don't do last year's. Do like, you know.
I don't know where they are.
No, you can't, you can't, you really, you gotta look at what you did last year.
It's all your highs.
You gotta talk about who's gone, who's in.
The horrible storm back in March.
You could like, say who the new town administrator is even though they don't want it. Well, I can't, can't put that in the report, but you can't, you can't.
No, but the finance just gains you, you know, like thirty thousand dollars.
We just got thirty-six thousand dollars.
We'll come tomorrow and we'll talk about it. We'll figure out something, I'm sure. I'm off tomorrow. We'll figure it out.
Just give a lesson. We're gonna write something nice.
Went in a wonderful direction.
What else?
That, that was, that's all I had. That's it. That's the meeting.
Um, I would just.
We have, sorry, sorry.
Oh, any public comment?
Uh, well, I want to do.
Selectmen's comments?
Individ- do we have any, um?
I would just ask.
Individual selectmen's reports?
I, uh, received the, the written letter from Mr. Hadley and I actually have a question because, uh, first off, I want to say that, um, I, 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 I did, uh, I did believe when we created that committee that there was a problem in town with the safety complex and that we needed to address it. That being said, uh, Mr. Hadley, uh, cited, uh, cited, uh, a right to know law and, uh, I was just curious if there was any, uh, if we could get a, an opinion from council or from the municipal association that in actuality, if, if there's any real threat. You know what I'm trying to say?
Well, cause it kind of says in the end, if most likely result, Superior Court, an injunction or at least.
So my question is, is, could we run this by council to see if there's any real, real risk of this happening for the board?
I'm okay with that.
The second, yeah, totally.
I don't think we need to.
Okay, I will send this over to council's, but.
My thing is, is.
Is that a public record document? Can we copy that?
Have mine.
I don't know if it's public. It's, it's, is it public? Does it came to us?
Public, it's come, once it's come across the table, it's public.
Okay.
Um, I'd just like to say, I did notice that, uh, we still need to get, um, town meeting on the website for February second. It's not on the town calendar. Not on the town calendar.
Oh, God. What's wrong? Your arms aren't long enough, right?
It's not on the town calendar.
I'm gonna give you a toss. There you go. You're welcome.
And then it probably wouldn't hurt to start pub, putting that out in a flyer or maybe on some boards on like maybe the transfer station board.
We're also gonna do the, um, voters guide.
Yep.
I'm trying to do as much as I can.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, I understand. It's busy. Yeah, I'm just, just, um, and that's it. That's all I got.
Alright.
Cause you, I did notice that you put the rec director on there. I saw that.
I did. The rec director got posted, the transfer station got posted, the building department got posted.
I didn't see that one.
And I'm going to get together with the fire chief.
Right. Now, um.
To post that position.
Those are posted on our webpage. Are they going out in the paper as well?
They are on the NHMA website. They're on our website and they weren't sent to Suncluck Valley yesterday to go in next Wednesdays, cause I can't get them in tomorrow. It's too soon.
The other thing that I know, we had a little bit, well, we didn't really have good luck because they didn't really last, but I know, uh, when Kate was here, she was using Indeed and we were getting a little bit of response from them.
Well, Indeed's better.
I know that costs us money though.
It does cost us money. It's fifty dollars per.
Do you want to still use it? It costs us money.
It does, it does.
Why? How much is it?
I don't know. I don't do it.
It's usually fifty dollars an article.
I don't do it.
Right, we use it all the time with the state.
I think we should at least put, I don't.
What do you want to do? You want to get a better, uh?
I'm doing whatever you want.
I don't think we need to put the transfer station one on there, cause we've been so long. I think the rec director, the, the building inspector and the firefighter one should be on there.
Well, we haven't posted that one yet until EGV.
I don't think the transfer station one, cause we've been, that one's been posted for a year and a half. We've gotten zero response, so. And that's gonna be a really tough one to fill. And no, maybe if I get voted out, I'll go back.
He's back. That's all you need.
I'm gonna find out why you're back.
It's okay. I don't know if I want to come back.
Pass the background check.
I guess while we're updating the website, can we update, um, like the names of the, the fire chief and the town, new town administrator and the, and the road agent and just update all those names.
Have the new fire chief write the fire, fire.
I gotta update the, update the, um.
The webpage.
The page in general.
I do. Some of it. I've already done it yesterday.
Uh, there was updated. There was this, I did see the rec director. I saw the rec director. I checked it yesterday.
Well, a couple months ago, I was still looking for Steve Pressman for my dump stuff at the dump, so you know, I might want to look at everything, everything.
Alright, I'll check that one. I thought that one would have been changed by now, but I went into the ones I knew needed to be changed and changed them. I'll.
Yeah, pretty hard to go see him at the dump, that's for sure. Considering. You need to be seeing him at the dump.
Alright.
Anything else?
I'm, I, I'm good.
Good meeting.
Citizen's call.
Very informative.
Citizen's call.
What's his name again?
Tim Colby.
It's Tim something.
Tim Colby.
Yeah, yeah, my last name's important.
Sherman Hill?
Yeah. No, actually Brian Rose.
Brian, Brian Rose.
Brian Rose. Um, is Vina Dow an employee of the town dump?
No.
Okay. So my eighty-three-year-old father and mother went here the other day, throw some garbage out. They have a green sticker on. The guy knows, Joey knows my father. Been going in twice a week. Vina come running over. You can't be here. You got the wrong sticker on. Give him all kind of rations.
It's not her, that's not.
So. Somebody needs to put her in their place or.
And, and we had said the sickest were okay until they registered their car again. We had made that.
You know, so if she, if she, keep her little swap shack over there. I, next time, my, next time my father goes in there, I told him to say. But, did you see that nice gate coming in, Vina? I'm, I'm, I told him, I told him to tell her that. Did you see that nice gate that was rolling?
He hates that.
Go look at the gate, Vina. That's what I told him to say, but.
Go look at the gate.
Cause Vina hates the gate.
She hates it.
So I just, just turned Vina up to more, but she came over to his car and was just crabbing at mum and dad to get out of here, cause you don't belong here. Dad says, I come here twice a day and the guys are in the shed, come out waiting for me, talk to me. So.
So that, who would that fall under? Would that fall under the, the supervisor down there or?
That sounds like John.
It's a board of select. It's actually a board of selection, selection issues. She's a volunteer.
So, but how do we, how would we address that though?
Just say Vina.
Send her a letter.
Vina.
You're gonna send her a letter?
What, just write a letter. Oh, wait, that she, that she's the swap shop, she's a volunteer at the swap shop and it's not up to her to decide who comes in and out of it.
We can't have her yelling at the public.
And then, um, I, like I said, who has the letters for the sign at Ball Field? Can we put like welcome sheet on that sign?
We could, absolutely.
Something like that, you know? I don't know. Who has the letters?
We're gonna have a formal pitting and a formal.
I think the letters.
Rec lady used to do one, but she isn't here anymore.
Who?
The rec lady used to put.
Maybe we can get, maybe, um, I might be able to do that tomorrow too. I don't know where they are.
Who has the letters?
I honestly don't know. I thought the rec lady, they'd be in the rec department, but.
She used to do it.
Without the rec lady, I honestly don't know where they are. I'm sure we can find them.
Some of them are in the garage.
I think the garage. I think I saw them.
We, there's another container up at the Ball Field.
Yeah.
It's kind of dunked half in the road and half out.
It fell off of the flatbed when it was being delivered.
Is that gonna be pulled out of the way someday? Cause the company I work for has equipment out here. Eventually we're gonna get that out of there and it's kind of half in the road, you know?
Eventually. No.
Next time, next time it's good weather, we're gonna probably pull the crusher out of there, so. I'm not speaking for my boss, but at some point, we gotta get that out, so something's gotta be done.
Thank you.
Gotta hire a rec person.
Yeah.
Alright.
That's their first thing to do.
So does the board want me to draft a letter?
Rick, watch out for the downstairs.
The board will commit and sign it periodically.
I have to read Mr. Hadley's letter here. There, there might be a problem, cause Scott has already admitted that they didn't follow the rules when they first.
Oh, he didn't say, he didn't say, it's not, we didn't follow the rules. We didn't.
I'm only getting this.
Didn't you, didn't you, didn't you, uh, say that we should run this by council?
I know, but. I think, I think, I think what happened is, is there might have been an oversight and maybe it's gotten blown up to something that probably.
Actually, I, I'm gonna say it right now. At the meeting, at the meeting, that, the initial meeting, and Tim was there, so he knows this is not a fib. I said, maybe we should, we should post a, didn't I, under ninety-one A. And then I go, I think this falls under ninety-one A. And the, uh, the architect kind of says, oh, this is a wor- sub-working group and I don't think this is really ninety-one A. And we had a discussion about it at the first meeting. And shame on me. I should have helped, I should have told the line, says, no, you need to post these, but I.
But to be fair, there's probably some other committees that are doing the same thing.
I'm not blaming the ticket law. I just need a.
Nah, it's fine.
What you said here, I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger.
I'm just saying that to be fair, there are some other committees that are.
They, you know, you know, while, while we're doing public comment, I'll say this too, and I'll, I said it in the meeting. This town has spent, since I've been a selectman for twenty years, this town has discussed trying to address police department, fire department. Everybody did not, nobody wanted to really, nobody on, and I'll admit, nobody in elected office wanted to do anything, not even myself, cause everybody was afraid of the tax impact. And after what happened with the Narrows and after what happened, seeing what's going on with the police department and their facilities, I says, you know what? Let's put it before the voters. And it, and if anything, it's full disclosure, cause we're telling them how the bond is, how much it is. There was no, everything was out in the open and they can say whatever you want, but we had pub, public information night and I don't think that, uh, we, we did, uh, there was complete transparency with all the information what it was gonna cost. And you know what? If you don't want it, if you don't agree with it, you have your right at the polls to say no. And it needs sixty percent. It's not like it's just a simple majority. And, uh, I just think some of the people that, tonight, overreacted.
Yes, absolutely.
I would just like to point out, um, Scott, that I also think some people don't understand that when you are in legal negotiations for the land and that kind of stuff, that that is non-public. Cause it is legal negotiations.
You know.
And they may not understand that.
The guy, the six oh three guy that owns the land, we're talking prices. You don't need to know that.
That's true.
When you're actually negotiating.
That's non-public.
Well, you might want to, you might want to let, you might want to let the attorney know about that part too.
Yep, because that's non-public.
So, alright, so we have anything else?
State statute.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody, well, first off, anybody else?
Huh? We did.
Mine was just to make sure that I selected from, and I think I come up with now. I lost it, but yeah. Um, yeah, that's it. We're good. Motion for adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything we need to do?
Okay, I'd like to start with, uh, um, okay, first off, a little explanation, um, we adjourned the meeting. Uh, it came to our attention that there was something on the agenda that we did not vote on. Uh, I would like to, uh,